We will go to the meeting, the orders, and open the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Any questions or concerns on it? Not? They all had a chance to read the minutes, they were sent out early, and also with the counts payable.
I got a motion.
Good. Most in a second to approve the consent agenda. Everybody good with the counts payable? Any other discussion? Bring in all those in favor.
Aye.
Any liquor licenses, Amber?
No, they've changed the, the system that we go into, and I don't have access to it yet, so, but I didn't say anything.
Okay. Ready? Any public comment?
If I may.
For it, state your name for the record.
Tracy Bulte, uh, just north of Glenwood here in Mills County. Uh, you have item number nine on your agenda today for the proclamation making, uh, the month of October, Community Planning Month, uh, here in Mills County. I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in support of the proclamation. It does help Mills County join communities nationwide and the American Planning Association in recognizing the importance of planning in communities. I wanted to express my support of you guys, uh, approving that, and I think, you know, what Mills County has done, both with the planning boards, the elected officials, and the community, has really benefited what Mills County will continue to be, the community we all want to work and live in. So, I appreciate your guys' consideration and forward to seeing what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to say? Good. We'll go to supervisor committee updates. I had a juvenile detention meeting last week. Uh, we're installing some, uh, protective shields around our comp center up there, so that's been an ongoing cost, but it's, uh, getting done, so things are looking good up there. That's only the end of the report.
Last week had a board of adjustment meeting. There's two things on our agenda. Number one, we first talked about the Schiller story by Henderson. Uh, a few changes in the conditional use permit, including adding more ground that will make it more beneficial for Schiller's and makes the project go a lot more easy throughout the years. And then the second item for last week's board of adjustment meeting was the request to have a wedding venue there on Gaston Avenue. That request was denied, the property was a little over three acres, and where they were planning on actually having the event center where the music and dances and things like that were going to happen was a little over 200 feet away from the neighboring property owner's home. Um, so that was denied for that reason, and then a few other concerns with traffic on Gaston Avenue and just public safety in general, so that was denied. But a part of the request was that if they were to come back and ask for reapproval, that they would talk with Jake, they'd talk with the sheriff about traffic and public safety concerns. So I gave them both the heads up last week. Nothing, yeah. And then last week also, I got confirmation that I was selected to go to the National Association of Counties' Rural Energy Peer Exchange in Wasco-Gillion and Sherman Counties in the organs of December 1st and 3rd. I will be there with 24 other county officials from across the United States, talking about citing and permitting, community engagement, and life use, and a few other things when it comes to renewable energy. So I think it'll be a good conference.
Mr. Crouch? I had a council and conference yesterday with Ag and Rural Affairs from NACO. Two of the big concerns we have is, is, uh, public health, mental health in the rural areas. Uh, the other one was, uh, buying and obtaining of, uh, American soil. It's amazing, some states are just now passing laws. Texas just got done in December, and they went as far as private property to foreigners and stuff. And let me tell you this, they're, they claim their, uh, Supreme Court has got a list, my law people objectives. There's lots of, lots of things going on there, but the main thing we focused on was the funding and stuff for rural areas. The feds are going to take a 10% reduction all over the United States. So they're cutting the states back 10%. The states will probably cut us at least 10%. So what's going to happen to our rural hospitals and then entities like Mission of Productions that take care of the mentally challenged? We can't draw enough money to take care of some of the clients that they're, uh, asking us to, uh, to take care of. And another note, uh, 25% of the states are anywhere from two, four years behind in paying, bills and stuff, and this is what's really hurting some of the states or hospitals and things. They, they got, you know, millions of dollars piled up, and the states are not paying it. Back this one state that all their hospitals got $2 million apiece, the state owed them for four years. So they're still three years behind. And this is, this is what's hurting us. It's not, not that they don't want to take care of the work and stuff, but we're, we're trying to figure out where the backlog is and why there should be a backlog. If the feds put it out, the state should put it out. States should not sit on the money.
Thank you, Jacob Farrow. General discussion?
All I have is general discussion this week. Um, and so we've got, I bring in front of you guys, uh, first thing, a sander for pickup truck. This is a pickup truck that we kind of basically added to our fleet about three years ago. We had the calcium chloride on it, and we did brine on it. And, uh, as I told you, we're kind of moving away from that. Just didn't see the results that we wanted. We're going to go back to the salt and sand. And primarily why we added this one, uh, make it to it, is just for the increase in subdivision. So that's a good example of how these subdivisions do bring real costs to this overtime. Uh, so we want to put a sander in back of that pickup truck. We got two quotes here, we're going to kind of compare them, but the top one's 9,500 and the bottom one's 8,400, so. And I'll look at the specs, um, and just make sure they're matched out.
Just put these in a three-quarter tire or one tire?
Yeah, yeah. So I'll, I'll pick some of the salt and sand to you guys next week. Look more detail in the specs, make sure we're. Um, we are looking for a Jerrantec. I know we just hired one, and it was not a good fit for him. We're a worker and everything, but just in a, in an office setting, uh, and just realizing how much he goes with that position of learning. He felt that it was best for him.
What salary are you offering on it? Is that negotiable or something?
It's a little negotiable. We start bottoms 2750 an hour, and I think I headed up to 2950. I didn't know it was comparable. Experience, hopefully. So before we post it publicly, we're going to go back and look at some applicants who you see, still do that. So see if there's someone to be all public.
Okay.
Um, and then last item, just kind of project update for H12. It's up there all day yesterday. They're not working today, obviously because of the weather. They're working east of 59 primarily. We should finish up the base widening of that section tomorrow, and then they'll start laying down the main by three quarters. On the set 59, we're still milling on the west side. Should finish that up in a day or two. Start base widening there, and it's kind of decent in the top, so. It's coming along, we've got a couple brick bangs, but already it's expected project office. Oh, yeah, just use caution. It's wide open at night, but for the main construction, it's, um, one area of the pipe, fire, fire, or something like that. That's all I got. Can you get anything for me?
Anything? You want to do anything for Jake?
Also, this is last week I talked to you.
Oh, good. This is good.
Yes. Very experienced. I'm good. I think, oh, when I'm going up there today, just kind of go up there, five year plan, yeah, and then we'll, we'll finish. I'll get, kind of, swear to me on that. Yeah, I think just, and I'll write that.
Thank you, sir. Be great today.
Yeah.
Get down to the proclamation. We have to wait later to open the agreement, and all those items are kind of.
Yeah.
Together.
Skip to item nine quickly. We have a couple minutes for our public hearing. So, uh, the next item we'll address is, uh, consideration of formal action, Community Planning Month Proclamation.
Probably towards the back.
Yeah, back.
Oh, yeah, last page.
Make motion to approve the Community Planning Proclamation from the National Community Planning. ABA.
Second, we have a motion in a second to approve the Community Pro- Planning Month Proclamation. And that is for November?
October, I think.
October. Is there any discussion? Hearing in all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. She's very blessed. Couple minutes here. 8:30. Looking at the public hearing. With that way this earlier. It's the one dog, I don't know if that's the way to do it. Those buildings, um, the, the front of them stripped off for the most part, and, uh, the other, it started, we'll back up here soon. It's the plan anyway. Sort of a fold, not really adopted, so.
You know, they received it.
That I'm not aware of.
The, uh, cheap six.
No, no, it's, it's expensive. Smart.
Are you good?
Good.
Yeah.
A little black. It's good for the farmers right now, Richard.
You bet.
Clean the beans up and.
Uh, maybe it'll settle some dust, I'll tell you. I never, I never har- harvested in such dust storm. But we quit harvesting the other night at seven o'clock because couldn't find each other. You could turn your blinking lights on or whatever, you'd sit there, and the wind had run away, and it would just barely creep away, and then, to unload an auger cart, just, oh, the guy pulled under right. He had, I never seen anything like, and then the next bin full can be as clear as a tree. Doesn't make sense.
Yeah, some loads is 0.2% FM, but then other loads with 6% FM.
Yeah.
It's. They're wrestling.
And there is a lot of beads to cut. I went to Chando last night. Over, down 59 and stuff. On corn, there is a lot of beads the harvest can get. And there's guys putting them in the big plastic tubes. One farm's got five, five, 500-foot tubes playing out in his field. And I often wonder how you could put anything in a plastic bag for it to keep, because if you set one in the house with something in it, it'll have to slide. Next day, they're splattered. Just talking about some horror stories up north. Some kids thought it was very much, very fun to take shot dead slugs, shoot them side to side. Well, it's nice. And they just explode because they're so tight. And there was a group they caught down south that was riding motorcycles and wheelers in one end.
All right, we've got 8:30, uh, at this time. I entertain a motion to open the public hearing for whitetail run in renewal area.
I'd make a motion to open the public hearing at 8:30.
We have a motion in a second to open the public hearing for whitetail run urban renewal area. Any discussion? Hearing now, let's do a roll call.
Sayers, or Crouch?
Yes.
Sayer.
Yes. Have you heard any written or oral comments about this?
None.
I haven't heard anything, what you guys?
I've heard nothing.
Motion to close public hearing at 8:30.
Motion in a second to close the public hearing at 8:31. Any discussion? Let's do a roll call again, Amber.
Yes.
Sayers, or Berry?
Yes. Next item is consideration of formal action, Resolution 2531, a resolution to declare necessity and establish an urban renewal area pursuant to Section 403.4 Code of Iowa, and approve urban renewal plan and project for the 2025 whitetail run urban renewal area. You have a motion?
I would make the motion for that consideration.
To approve or?
Yes, to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve Resolution 2531. Is there any discussion? I guess my question is, uh, everything will be frozen January 1st, so what is there? Is, is already there, correct? Okay, okay, okay.
And that will, I think you spelled that a little more in the development agreement.
Okay. Okay, okay. Any other discussion? Hearing now, let's do a roll call again.
Berry?
Yes.
Crouch?
Yes.
Sayers?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2501, an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in 2025 whitetail run urban renewal area pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Iowa Code.
This allows us to create that type area. Um, and we are allowed to waive the second and third reading on these, if you guys so wish, um, and then pass that with us today. Once the ordinance is passed, it has to be published in a paper.
Sure.
It's a pretty uniform process.
I would make a motion to approve consideration of the ordinance of 2501.
Second caution.
We have a motion in a second to approve ordinance 2501. Is there any discussion? Hearing now, let's do a roll call again.
Yep, Sayers.
Aye.
Berry.
Yes.
Yes.
Some carries. Next item is consideration of formal action to waive the second and third reading of ordinance 2501.
Make motion to waive the second and third reading of ordinance 25 dash 01.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to waive the second and third reading of ordinance 2501. Is there any discussion? Hearing now, let's do a roll call.
Berry?
Yes.
Sayers?
Aye.
Crouch?
Yes.
The next item is ordinance 2501 to be formally adopted.
I'd make a motion to formally adopt ordinance 2501.
We have a motion in a second to formally adopt ordinance 2501. Any discussion? On before the state's effect?
Um, it won't take effect until after the development agreement is approved. And then they will certify debt. If, if this all goes through, we'll certify debt December 1st, and their first date, I think, will be December of 2026, maybe.
Any other discussion? Hearing now, let's do a roll call again.
Uh, Crouch?
Yes.
Sayers?
Aye.
Berry?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2532, setting a date of meeting at which it is proposed to approve a development agreement with Jennifer Mark Hughes, including tax increment payments. Hearing date is set for November 18th at 8:45 AM.
We'll be here for November 18th, correct? Okay, because, uh, Richard was going to go, so make sure that we have.
I, I really like, I'm being in the air, so I'm really, I'll be able to call it.
Right. Okay. Yep, just making sure that.
I would, I would make a motion to approve setting the date of November 18th.
We have a motion in a second to set the hearing date for November 18th at 8:45 AM. Resolution 2532, any discussion? Hearing now, roll call.
Sayers?
Aye.
Berry?
Yes.
Crouch? Yes.
Then, number four, an audit of just formal action, date and time to the first and second board supervisor meetings in November.
So I think we've talked about this before, I wanted something to make sure of. So election date November 4th, I think typically you guys cancel that meeting. You're at all the buildings that work the whole day. Um, so I just want to have, if we want to cancel it or move it. And then November 11th meeting is obviously on Veterans Day, and, um, so we will set that meeting for the 12th at 8:15 here in the office. I do have a public hearing scheduled for the 12th, so.
I'll make motion to cancel any first meeting of November and to schedule the second week's meeting on November 12th at 8:15 AM.
Second, we have a motion in a second to cancel the November 4th meeting due to the election and to move the second meeting to November 12th at 8:15 AM. Is there any discussion?
I, I'll have to maybe leave time drive to Mappa. I have a 11 o'clock meeting that morning. That's one thing I have.
We have a motion in a second to approve those. Any other discussion? We have a motion in a second to approve. Is there any other discussion? Hearing now, let's do a roll call on that too, Amber.
Bayberry?
Yes.
Crouch?
Yes.
Sayers, or?
Discussion regarding meeting conduct policy, review draft meeting, conduct policy and Robert's rules of order for consideration of future meetings.
So, I have, I don't know if I got these at your desk, this though.
Do you want to have that one, Amber?
It's one that's. So, this is what I have wrapped it up. I used the template I had had. I actually created this for the second one and asked them to borrow it. So, it's kind of what I'm looking at. And then also I got a few cheat sheets for Robert's rule of order. I know we had discussed adopting Robert's rule of order and also meeting conduct policy. So, I would like you guys to take a look at these the next couple of weeks, review them, let us know of any changes. And then we can speak on however we want and then move forward with adopting them at a future meeting.
Review.
So, or just really for your review the next week or something. Just let me know when you guys are ready to take action on it.
Good with that? Any discussion on that?
I had, I'm just reading some of this earlier this morning. I had a couple of people call me and contact me that they'd like to bring a petition in. I says, believe you have to bring it to the auditor's office first, but it stays here. And they wanted a speed reduction. I says, well, you have to get a petition would be your best bet. And take it to the auditor's office. She'll put you on the agenda, come present yourself, why, ask questions, things, so.
And then what I would do probably is just alert Jacob and my head now, send it to him, say the agenda, you know. We're really trying to get people to go to the department heads first before they come to the board because if it can be solved at the department level, that would be. That's kind of been our push. Like if, if they haven't talked to the department head, I, I pushed them to talk to the board. And then I think as we chatted last week.
I can call them back and, you know, have them do both, you know.
I think as we chatted last week, if I did get requested to be on the agenda, I will be contacting the board chair and getting approval before adding it to the agenda.
Thank you.
Any new business?
Well, I think, you know, we went through weekly count payable and stuff, and I still see, we're still having some handwritten. Are these ones that they forget about or?
Yeah, we're, we're working with the department heads. One was, two, one was for a vehicle. They didn't realize it was ready and ran a price that really wasn't. And I can't remember what the other one was. Oh, the U of B, that was to pay off that CO bond. And I had to wait and force some instructions and we got those after the meeting day. So, then we had to, so that bond actually paid off. That was, the handwritten we did for that U of B once to wait for some payment instructions. Actually, we paid it and had sent it at a certain time. And then the other one unfortunately came in about an hour or two after that. So, it, it would have been nice to be able to do one. But we are trying to make sure people are ready if they can. But if it's one off situation, it's a one.
I do like seeing every week. I don't know if it's for work, but it's.
It's nice. I think actually it, it soothes that workload out. So, you're not, you know.
One full day, yes, yeah. Anything else?
I'm attending a webinar tomorrow afternoon at one o'clock due on this pipeline, the CO2. What it's coming down to now is whether counties all over the United States, I don't know how they've done this, but the Supreme Court wants to look at all the counties and what they are saying about pipelines and how they're handled and everything, you know. It doesn't sound like they want to leave it in our hands, which is really irritating to me. Someone in DC knows not very much about Iowa, so. I'll have more to report next week, hope or meet.
Final question with that, Richard. Shelby and Story County are the only two counties from the state of Iowa that are officially a part of that lawsuit, right?
Right.
Is there any other from any other state or is it just Shelby and Story?
That's the only two that I have heard about. Nobody has told us from other states, you know. But how it got thrown into a United States full coverage thing, I don't know. Nobody, that, that's been kind of a miscommunication from the whole beginning, you know, because it was supposed to been the state of Iowa. And then all of a sudden it becomes all the states probably because, like I say, I think they're wanting to rule with, you know, what we can do and can't do.
There's somebody.
I don't have anything else on, like, Richard. Go ahead.
Real quick, um, you mean what's part of it today, or talk about budget season? We've talked about setting that first comp board meeting. So, we're going to start laying out a timeline for budgets. And then also our office is very busy with elections, which is next weekend. Appreciate the work that my office student made this one smoothly. So, we'll be doing, it will be, I'll be in and out a little bit. I mean, somebody will be here, but P D has training for P E Os the next three days. So, a little short staff in there.
What voters do we need?
We've had a good stream, so.
Good?
No, it doesn't.
I'll make a motion to, Richard.
Second. We have a motion in a second to adjourn at 8:44. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. We are adjourned.